I think we're ready. We're ready? All right, we are ready for our 5:30 city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Charles?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Foyce?
Here.
All right, thank you. First item of business, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. You doing a pledge again?
Yeah, I guess we're doing pledges.
All right, Mr. Amos, you did it so well the first time. Let's do that again.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes of the December 20th, 2021 regular session as proposed, and the minutes of the December 20th, 2021 work session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda and we have minutes. While we have public comments, I want to take a little bit of courtesy, professional courtesy, to our new council members. Do you have any comments or anything that you would like to say? Normally, if you were in the chambers, you definitely have that opportunity. But is there any, are there any comments you would like to make right now?
I just want to say, this is, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nichols?
I just want to say, it is a pleasure to be serving the city of Waterloo, and I look forward to the wonderful four years working with this council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mr. Charles. I'd like to thank everyone, I'm looking forward to this four years as well. It's going to be a great ride, I think, and I'm really looking forward to this positive energy we're going to have on this council. So, thank you, City of Waterloo, for having us, and looking forward to this four years.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to echo what Mr. Charles, or, hi, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Wilder. I just want to echo what Mr. Charles and Mr. Nichols said. I'm ecstatic to be able to serve my community and to serve the people of Waterloo, and I cannot wait to see what a difference we all can make together and put our minds to it, so thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Well, I'll tell you, Ms. Wilder, you said a couple key words there, and the biggest one you said is "together." I think they say you can accomplish great things if nobody cares who gets the credit when we're working together. So, I want to thank all of you for being willing to step up. I want to thank those that have been on here for two years already. I want to thank you for your continuation to serve. You've got some excellent examples of council members who exemplify selflessness with their role in fulfilling those duties. And you also have some amazing city staff, department heads that are very knowledgeable in their areas. You have an incredible city staff that go above and beyond the call of duty to serve the public. From my conversations with all of them, they are excited to have you onboard. And of course, all of the 68,000-plus citizens that you represent for the city of Waterloo. So, I have no doubt that all of you, whether old or new, I mean, not old as in "old," more seasoned, I have no doubt that you guys will be able to partner and work together to do some incredible things. So, thank you. We also have public comments at this point as well. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk to the council, to the mayor, and to our city staff?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I submitted a letter to the editor today regarding developing a homeless shelter, and I see an executive session at the end of the meeting after we can't talk anymore, on purchasing more property. First, how much more empty land do we need to spend money on? How much do we have now? I feel if I, if we have money for the, that thing that I don't feel is necessary for future economic development, which is always the answer I hear, why don't we find some grants and some city money to help our homeless?
All right, haven't had a chance to read that, but I will definitely take a look at the, you submitted it to the Courier?
Today, sir.
All right, so I'll definitely take a look at that. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council or staff? Mr. Foyce? Oh, I'm sorry, we have one other person. Hold on one second.
Yeah, I would, I'm Alan Green. I'm actually a native Waterloo, from Waterloo, just moved back about six, eight weeks ago, and just wanted to say that I'm impressed by the changes that have happened since I haven't been here for 40 years. But I'm glad to be a citizen, and hopefully I can get involved with the city and the things that are happening in this community.
All right, we're glad to have you. We need many folks in the vineyard to help. Mr. Green, I need you to state your address for the record, so we have a record of that.
My address is 1205 Lois Lane, Waterloo.
Are you related to Reg Green?
Pardon me?
To Reg, Reg Green?
No, I have no relations to any of the Greens in Waterloo.
Okay.
I have two brothers who are here.
Okay.
One is Riley Green, and the one other is Walter Marshall.
Okay, okay, I know Walter, all right, thank you. All right, Mr. Greider? Mr. Foyce, I'm sorry.
Council, can we make comments?
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, could we, since we've had winter ushered in, could we get an update on our downtown snow removal and how things are going from Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Bennett, are you online?
Yes, I am, Randy Bennett, Public Works Manager. So, as far as the snow removal when it comes to downtown, one of the things that we started doing different last year had to do with the purchase of bee pollen wings, where we are able to kind of stockpile the snow towards the end of the parking areas and different sections of piles of town as far as downtown. And some of the things that we've been doing is hauling that snow throughout the day, which we actually started doing that today, kind of coming off of this long break. And that's something that we've been doing a little different than what we've done in the past. It seems to have worked pretty good with the businesses downtown, and that's kind of what we're doing right now.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, because I've had a comment that this meeting isn't being streamed on YouTube. Is there a delay on this, on the YouTube, or is there a technical issue?
So, isn't, he said, you know, you're not sure if we are or not, or?
I had, I had received some tech questions on the YouTube channel, and I was just curious if there's a delay and it'll be later, or is there a technical issue why it's not being livestreamed?
Hey, Chris, why don't you come to the podium and say what you said?
Chris Youngblood, Technology Director, we are checking on that right now. There is usually a delay on the YouTube channel, however, this would be kind of a significant one. So, it is being recorded, and will be on YouTube as soon as we have that available.
Thanks, there.
All right, anyone else?
Right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to receive and file public comments. And then, hold on, do I have to do the bill statement as well, this quickly?
No, not yet, just receive and file.
Sorry. Receive and file public comments, sorry.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, public comments are closed, next the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to receive the, receive and file the consent agenda.
Second.
And then that's when you add in the bills payment.
With the bills payment, okay. With the bills payment for January 3rd, 2022, in the amount of $4,88,238.23.
Second.
All right, a motion to receive the consent agenda and the bills payment number. Council, questions or anything on this? This will be a roll call vote this time, so you'll be all asked individually. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. There are a number of appointments to boards. Mary Potter to the Waterworks Board, that's a reappointment. Tina Hummel to the Community Development Board. New appointment, Zach Hanson. And that's a reappointment to Main Street, Samantha Meyer, that is a new appointment to Main Street. Nicholas Hedrick, that's a new appointment to Main Street. Purvis Williams is a new appointment to Main Street. Brandon Alvarado is a new appointment to Main Street. Michael Heisman and Brendan Wagner are both new appointments to Waterloo, Main Street. So, if any of you are watching, we just want to say thank you so much for stepping up to serve on these various committees and boards, and we look forward to a great relationship and moving this community forward. So, thank you to all of our new appointments and returning. Could someone take number two for us?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is a request by Three Stooges LLC for a site plan amendment to the M-2P Plant Industrial District to allow for the construction of three new commercial buildings on their site on Martin Road, located north of 2010 West Ridgeway Avenue. Second.
That motion has been made with a second for the request by Three Stooges LLC. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience or Cyberland that would like to speak to a site plan amendment for Three Stooges? Going a second time. Mr. Amos?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, that motion to close the public hearing portion of it has been made along with the approval that it's already received from the Planning and Programming, Programming and Zoning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
The hearing is now closed. Mr. Amos?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment to the M-2P Plant Industrial District to allow for the construction of three new commercial buildings on their site on Martin Road, located north of 2010 West Ridgeway Avenue. Second.
That motion has been made with a second. So, no, this is simply amending that the zoning ordinance to allow for three new commercial buildings that will bring tax value to the city. Council, questions on this item yet? All right, this, this part will be a roll call vote, so it'll be an individual vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
That motion has been made with a second. They need to move forward. When we suspend it, the State Code does give an option for us to be able to suspend it to do all three readings on this particular item. I'm being told by Mr. Anderson that the developer needs to move forward. There's not been any objections on file from anyone, so it is an ask to suspend the rules for this one, and this is an individual vote again. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance. Second.
That motion has been made with a second to pass it for the second and third times in adopting this. This is, again, an individual vote this time. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yeah.
Ms., excuse me, Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take three, four, and five?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider? Wait, was that Mr. Greider? Who was that?
It was Mr. Foyce.
Oh, Mr. Foyce.
And Mr. Foyce.
I would, I would like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. I'd like to, number three is a resolution approving the experience Waterloo Board recommendations for funding in the partner and event hotel motel tax grant funds for third and fourth quarters of fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $38,000. Number four is a resolution approving a grants agreement with Blackhawk Gaming in the amount of $400,000 for the Cedar River Lighting Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And five is a resolution approving a temporary construction easement agreement with Santa L. Utsler, Angela C. Lons, and Daniel Utsler Stone in the amount of $394.94 in conjunction with reconstruction of the 11th Street Bridge, located at 181 West 11th Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Is there anyone in the audience or cyberspace that would like to comment on these three items? Counsel?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bo- I just had a question for Mr. Hall regarding the funding, and one of my first questions was the, do we often fund through our hotel motel events in Cedar Falls? It had been in the past.
Yeah, so, Tavistale Experience Waterloo. We do, we have funded occasionally. An event like the first robotics competition does fill a number of Waterloo hotels, so even though the event is being held in Cedar Falls, the economic impact is still realized in Waterloo through the increase in hotel occupants.
And that led to my second question, because we're showing a, an economic total impact of $1.397 million. And I'm just curious, on your, on your system that, I've got all your graphs and stuff in front of me, how we determine how much food is going to be bought in Waterloo, how many beds and beds? Because, I mean, even for food and beverage, we're, we're looking at attendees and organizers $463,000 worth. Is that combined Cedar Falls and Waterloo, is that Waterloo?
Yeah, unfortunately, the system doesn't let us sort of pick out between Waterloo and Cedar Falls. It's really sort of a unique event that way. Typically, on an event that large, we would try to, we would recommend awarding the full $20,000. So, because it's in Cedar Falls, recognizing that the calculator is limited to that extent, that we can't sort of calculate out, you know, where those dollars are going to be spent, whether it's in Waterloo or Cedar Falls, since it's a Cedar Falls event, that's why we felt confident in that $5,000 recommendation, just because it's, $5,000 is a much more manageable number and the likelihood of us receiving that back, just recognizing the impact on hotel occupancy.
So, so if we say $1.397, is that Cedar Valley or is that Waterloo?
Yeah, so that one, that one's Cedar Valley because that is held in Cedar Falls. I mean, ultimately, all of them are, right? Certainly, nothing stops someone who is coming for pool and dart tournament from either staying in Cedar Falls or grabbing dinner somewhere. It's really a way to gauge the value of an event. It's not a, an exact, there isn't really frankly a system for us to go back and measure, okay, they spent this dollar here, that dollar there. That's, that's, I don't like data, but that's a little too big brother even for me.
I appreciate your input, sir, thank you.
All right, any other questions? This will be a, everyone will vote on this at the same time. All in favor for three, four, and five?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Could someone take six, seven, and eight, like Mr. Bozen?
I'd be happy to, sir. Resolution approving a temporary construction easement agreement with CNS Properties LLC in the amount of $198.63. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I'm one ahead, but we'll read this one first. In conjunction with the reconstruction of 11th Street Bridge, located at 185 and 189 West 11th Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document and adopting a resolution approving a temporary construction easement agreement with Santa L.
Oh, I read that one, Mr. Bozen.
I apologize, and, okay, number, number seven, resolution approving temporary construction easement with Howard Allen Investments, Inc., in the amount of $1,808.61 in conjunction with the reconstruction of the Park Avenue Bridge, located at northwest corner of Park Avenue. This bribe, I imagine that's bridge, and the Cedar River, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eight is a resolution approving a temporary construction easement with US Bank National Association in the amount of $1,268.47 in conjunction with the reconstruction of the Park Avenue Bridge, located in northwest corner of Park Avenue Bridge and the Cedar River, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Are there any questions about these three items, six, seven, and eight? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, six, seven, and eight passes. Could someone take nine, 10, and 11?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion approving a resolution for an acquisition contract with Burke A. Meehee and Julianne D. Meehee to acquire 0.81 acres of broadway and approving a temporary easement agreement for 0.36 acres in the amount of $11,178 and up to $1,000 in closing costs located north of 6216 Hammond Avenue in conjunction with the Hammond Avenue, St. Creek Bridge Construction Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 10, resolution approving a professional services agreement with Strand Associates of Madison, Wisconsin in the amount not to exceed $20,000 in construction with engineering services for wastewater treatment plant and collection system operations project and authorizing the mayor, mayor to execute said document and a resolution approving request by the City of Waterloo for the final plat and four-way division, a six-floor residential subdivision located south of 203 Fairfield Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Are there any questions about these three items from anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question on the acquisition of the right-of-way, and maybe, I don't know if Jamie's on the line yet, but this, this project's been standing idle for a couple of years. I'm just curious now with this acquisition, do we have a timetable on when we're going to be moving forward with the bridge reconstruction and that road opened up?
Correct. Avenue.
Mr. Nichols, then?
City Council City Engineer, he's our operator, he's our director. He said that. Feedback there. City Council City Engineer, right now, we are still working with property owners for acquisition of the property. It's been, some of it has been the delay based on property acquisition, some of it has been delays with getting permits through the DNR. We're still working with the DNR. We heard a week ago, we've got some good news on how to be able to move this thing forward through permits, not only through the DNR, but through, but through FEMA as well. I wish I could give you a good timeframe, Mr. Bozen. I'm, I'm hoping that by springtime, we have got to the point that we can be going out to bid, but there's, there's no guarantees on that based on, we still are probably going to end up going to condemnation with one of the property owners, and FEMA with their permit reviews can take as long as 180 days. So, you know, best case, we'd be going out to bid in the spring, worst case, it'll be fall, before we be going out to bid.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Well, for nine, 10, and 11, that's a roll call vote.
Mr. Greider?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Charles?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 12 and 13?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving construction plans for the Short Sedition Private Sanitary Sewer Extinction Project as submitted by Crawford Engineering and Survey, Surveying, Inc. of Independence, Iowa, and a sewage treatment agreement, DNR Form 29, parentheses, November 00, parentheses, with the Department of Natural Resources and final acceptance of construction plans, subject to the review and acceptance by the Department of Natural Resources and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Next is a resolution approving Amendment Number Six to the Development Agreement with Central Properties Holdings, LLC, originally executed August 17, 2017, to raise the minimum assessed value from $2.5 million to $4.0 million and eliminate the mortgage on the property for the All-In Groceries Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with a second. I was going to have Noel give some comments for 13 because it's a little confusing reading in the newspaper and seeing no mortgage, as if no mortgage is on there, so, no.
Noel Anderson, Community Funding Development Director. So, going back to the first version of the development agreement, the original, the main focus there was buying the CVS lot, which the city provided some- the CVS lot, which the city provided some, about 50% of the funds to do that. So, we placed a mortgage on that lot. As we moved ahead and the, the site has expanded through future additional amendments, the House of Hope building was, was relocated into the Church Row area. We were able to improve the parking situation for Walnut Court and, and gain a larger site there for commercial development. So, the development agreement has, has been amended to include all these actions, one of which changed the minimum assessed value up to 2.5. They are requesting to go to 4.0 million. This is at the request of the developer. As they're noting, the project has, has grown in size from the original amounts. They've, of course, added some additional tenants that'll be in the building. And so they're, in, in working with them, I believe the permits were taken out at about 6.2 or 6.8 million. So, we believe that the, the value should go up. They're also setting it up that way for the financing on their side to work the, the way that the banks want to. Going into, working with their banks to, to get this project under construction again, they've asked for the mortgage portion again on that original CVS lot to be released. Generally, when we're working with projects and we have a smaller mortgage and then there's a larger one on the construction, we'll subordinate them or release them. In this case, since we have additional reversionary language in the development agreement anyway, to ensure that the project happens or we still have reversionary rights, we didn't see the need to keep the mortgage on there. So, we are recommending to release it as they've requested it. One other thing I think to think about is, again, these are the banks and the developer working to get this building built so that they can start the construction there. Our development agreement is in place to ensure the building gets built. Once the building is built, then our, our development agreement will be satisfied. So, our, our window of concern is a lot smaller than, than probably the banks for their mortgages because their mortgages will actually carry out for a number of years for the business to continue. So, again, we are, we are okay with the amendments that they're requesting to move the project ahead.
All right. Questions for Noel on 13 or questions on number 12?
Mr. Mayor?
We have someone from the audience stepping up. Yes, sir? And then we'll come to you, Mr. Bozen.
Mayor Hart on number 13. I am Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. Very concerned taxpayer. As I read in the paper, we have given $2 million already. I don't understand all of the forgiveness, how much we're forgiving, but if we give clear title to that property, that means that it could be sold without anything against it. I've had several phone calls today from people, most of them elderly like I am, and they have a concern about giving up $2 million of city assets. We have given them like 400,000 to start with. We gave them a $500,000 grant, so we have $900,000 invested there. I made a call a while back to find out where the $500,000 grant, where that stood. I found out we have, somebody has spent 300,000 out of that 500,000 and it's gone. I asked if that money went to pay for the fence around the site. They said, "We do not have any accurate information to tell you where the money went, but 300 of the 500 is gone." I have followed this from day one. The developer called some people together. I was one of them in the back of the room here. We talked about this agreement. I thought it was great. I approved of it and, and, but I had no idea that we were going to continually change the agreement, continually to move the date of completion. And now we are years, we started in 2017. This is 2022. So, for five years, we've been paying interest on all the money we put in that. And Rodney, or excuse me, the developer was here last week and asked for an extension. He said he had his money approved. He only needed one more signature. Now, we're about to relieve him of a big financial obligation. I don't know if it's 2 million or 1 million or what it is, but we're going to relieve him of that obligation. That obligation will then go on the backs of the taxpayers like me and those who called me today. I am very disappointed that we continue to give money away. This development agreement has a city employee or more than one involved in this agreement, and I do not think it's fair to give them this money when it is a city employee that's getting some of the benefit. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Noel, Noel, within there, he mentioned, if, you mentioned a little bit earlier about it having to be built. What is, what is the city's portion of being, what's the city's obligation? What happens if it's not built?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, again, we still have reversionary language in the development agreement. It'll specifically tell them, say that they cannot sell the land before the project is built. The other reversionary language we'll talk about, if it's not built and fully completed for a building to be occupied, then the city has reversionary rights to go after the grant funds. We have reversionary rights to go after the land. So, we, we still have a pretty strong development agreement in place.
Yes, sir.
You know?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I'm not sure I understand this mortgage release, but I'm catching a little bit of it. As a member of American Legion Post 285 in Parkersburg, we have raised money for different projects in Parkersburg. Our agenda was first, let the potential donor know what we wanted to do. Next, how much it was going to cost and when the project would be completed. Our largest was over $200,000. If we were short of funds, we borrowed the money. So, the project stayed on time and through the generosity of the area citizens, the money always arrived and the project was completed on time. Seeing progress has been our key to our success for the completion of our projects and the funds coming in. Lack of progress on the issue is causing concern for the taxpayers whose money is now potentially going to be granted. I want to see this building, built, but do not think that we should continue to extend and continue to change and amend.
Thank you. Mr. Bozen?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I had a number of questions for Noel and if he could, if he could explain some of the reversionary language in the development agreement. I have a citizen in, in front of me that talks about performance bonds and, and things like that, but could you highlight what the reversionary language is? And my, and another question I had before, before, I have a number of questions, but we have, we have a mortgage on, on the $400,000 that we put towards the CVS property. I believe the CVS property cost 750,000. We paid 400,000. Is that the only mortgage that, that we have on the 400,000 or why would we not include the $500,000 grant as part of the mortgage of, of cash money that we're giving to this project?
Noel Anderson, excuse me, Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, our reversionary language typically is in there in all our development agreements and it'll talk about the fact that if they do not finish the project, the development agreement is, is no, is, is voided. So, there will be no rebates available for the project. It'll also talk about the details of if we have conveyed any land or we have helped acquire any land, that we have rights back to those portions of land. As you recall, with this project, there was the original CVS one, which had the mortgage on it. There was the House of Hope and the parking lot parcels that we helped acquire and then conveyed over. And then there was also some alley that we vacated for the site. So, that's all worded in there for all of that reverting back and the city having rights to that. Obviously, if, if the project were to fail at a, at a certain point, we'd have to look at what is the best point moving forward. Obviously, the, the city is not just another financial agent out there or something helping this. We're, we're there to make sure that the project and the site are a success in the end. So, as we move ahead, if there is some kind of a failure before the building is fully built, because again, our development agreement will substantially be completed after that is, is, is done, we'd have to look at what options we want, want to move ahead with, with the reversionary language.
So, sir, the, as I look at the development repayment, it says a mortgage or, or performance bond in the mountain outlook is $2 million. Do we have that performance bond?
I would have to check. I'm not sure right offhand.
Because I'm not comfortable voting on this if I don't know that we have these items in place, that, that we're going to, we're going to be protected. And my, my other question was, if, is his financing contingent on us releasing this mortgage? Because I was under the understanding that they closed on financing in the middle of December.
It was my understanding they have one closing, they will have another set of documents being, being finalized and that the release of the mortgage was required for that second action.
So, why would that not have been brought before this council during the, during the finance portion of this as opposed to coming before council now that says his, his financing is contingent upon us releasing this mortgage? Because it kind of puts us at an 11th hour that we're kind of at, in a, in a crossroad that we have to pass this for, for his financing to become available. I would think this should have been something that we would have been working on with the developer and with, with his, through his financer, that this would come before the council at an earlier date than, than this point in time that he still doesn't have his final financing lined up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not certain why it didn't come forward earlier. We were just made aware of it and so we moved the, the action to an amendment document and, and came to council to keep it going.
And Mr. Bozen, can I have Michelle, can I have Ms. Weidner chime in?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, sir.
There. Sorry, I couldn't get off mute for a minute. Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer. I was just going to speak to the grants that have been given at this point. We have paid out $300,000 of the $500,000 grant. We do have a list of the invoices that were submitted for providing proof that those expenses had been paid. So, I just, I want to counsel to know that we do have documentation of the 300,000 that's been paid so far. Unfortunately, I do not know about the performance bond. I wish I did. Can't help but ask.
Thank you, Michelle. That's, that's my concern is that, that we don't have information. I emailed last Tuesday asking for information and, and I, I'm, I'm real apprehensive about voting on something that I, that I received the information at the council meetings. I mean, this, this project, I've kind of had a standstill. I would be in favor of postponing it until we could get this information back to council, that we do have a performance bond or that we do have mechanisms in place to, to recoup our investment. And I, and another question I had with, with for Noel is when, in the paper quoted, I was under the understanding it's 1.5 million. The paper quoted $2 million of, of our investment, economic investment. Does that include the 10 years at 80% tax abatement in that figure, sir? Or is that separate part of our investment?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I don't have all those numbers right in front of me, but I do believe that in count, that does include the, the rebate that is estimated.
Okay, thank you, sir. And if I, if I, I, I would make a motion to postpone this until the next meeting so that we could get some further information to better make a more educated decision, especially considering the performance bond and our protection if we release this mortgage.
All right, so he's made a motion?
I'll second.
Was that Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, there's been a motion to postpone. So, is there any questions or comments about the motion to postpone? All right, if you want to postpone, then your vote would be yes. If not, your vote would be no. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, motion has been postponed. On number 12, we still have a vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number 14 and 15, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. A resolution appointing UMB Bank NA of Kansas City, Missouri to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent and approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement in conjunction with the $14,75,000 taxable general obligation bond, Series 2022A, and authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document. And then another resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the bonds and approval of the continuing disclosure certificate in conjunction with the $14,75,000 general obligation bond, taxable Series 2022A, and authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Questions about these two items? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I ask a quick question before we go move to executive session?
Yes.
Ms. Duckley, just, do we need to go back and redo a roll call vote on our resolutions from earlier that we did voice vote on?
We should and we can just do a quick one and have it covered for all of those. We did vote in favor of all of them. I didn't hear anybody say nay, but...
Okay, so can I make a motion to reconsider then or just make a motion to adopt the resolutions?
Yep, that'll work. Just make another motion to adopt the resolutions and just do roll call vote.
Do you remember which numbers they were? I, I don't have them written down.
They were...
I believe they were 1 through 8.
That's what I thought.
Yep, it's 1 through 8.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to adopt resolutions 1 through 8.
Second.
Second.
The motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session on the purchase of real estate pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21-51J.
Second.
The motion has been made with a second. Mr. City Attorney, are we adjourning correctly?
Yes.
He says yes according to Section 21.5I and J. That would be a roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, Counsel, I believe you have a, another Zoom line, correct?
Correct.
So, at this time, would ask that you would go there.